Good evening, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Welcome, everybody. Ms. Concolino, Clerk Concolino, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Member Ashby.
Here.
Warren. Harris.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Chenier.
Here.
Gara.
Here.
Jennings.
Here.
Carr.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Quorum has been established. Thank you very much. We have a busy agenda tonight. I'd like to begin, though, by asking School Board Member Darrell Wu and Elk Grove City Council Member Stephanie Nguyen, who's here in the audience. I thought I saw her, to please lead to one, to thank you for your service. Darrell, I was privileged to attend the Art of Compassion showcase sponsored by you and Vice Mayor Jennings a week ago Friday, and it was really memorable. So I'd like you and our friend, Councilmember Nguyen, who wears many hats, to come on up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will see you, I think, just a moment here. We have three presentations. I want to do the first two now, and then the third one after the consent calendar. Let us begin with File Item 1, which is Recognizing Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And we see a lot of our friends here in the public audience. We welcome all of you, and I want to turn it over to Councilmember Guetta to make the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Along with May being a great celebration, not only for Geminis and Tauruses and people who like, you know, the birthstone of emerald, it's also May's Bike Month. But one of the proud things to remember about May is May is our National API Heritage Month, and it's recognized by the state of California. And I think today's our first time we will recognize API Heritage Month here in the city of Sacramento.
Terrific.
And to accept this award, I would like to ask our council member, Stephanie Nguyen, to come up, along with all our community partners who are here that she works with every single day, please come to the podium. And as she comes up, you know, let me give a little bio about Councilmember Stephanie Nguyen. She not only grew up in District 6, and her family are still there, but she continues to work there. And although she did leave us for some cities further south, you know, where she's doing a great job as a council member, she continues to provide a lot of resources on economic development, workforce, social services, and everything that the Asian Pacific Islander diaspora has. She worked with our police department, with the links to law enforcement, to encourage the diversification and showing young people how they can access their pathway to a career in law enforcement. She has been involved with the Juvenile Justice Commission, the Pacific Rim Street Festival, and as a Secretary of the Council on Asian Pacific Islanders Together for Advocacy and Leadership. She's continued to be a leader in our community. And before I read the resolution, I'm going to ask our council member, Stephanie Nguyen, if she could say a few remarks. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you. This truly means so much to all of us here, and I'm not going to say just to me. The last time I was here, I talked about how I look at all of you and I work with all of you. We work with all of you, but yet there wasn't anybody up there that looked like us, that understood our community. And so I am so happy to see that Howard Chan is our city manager up there. He represents not just the Asian community, but all the communities. I've called on him on many issues because the organization that I serve serves all of the communities, and I just want to just tell you what a wonderful job he's in. And that, you know, I want to thank you, Councilmember Guetta, for taking the charge on this, and that, yes, this is the first time that this city had recognized this being API Heritage Month. And I'm going to take only 10 more seconds here because I want to pass it along to a couple of other trailblazers behind me who'd like to say just a couple of sentences. And I gave them a 10-second limit as well, because as you said, Mr. Mayor, that there's a tight schedule. But, you know, I want to say that we're very fortunate that we're here in a country where there is freedom. And freedom comes at a cost, a cost for many of us here who are immigrants or refugees by our family who came here in such ways where they've experienced danger. We are still here in a country where we're able to be safe and there is freedom, but that comes at a cost of the men and the women who put on the uniform, or the men and the women who put on, you know, a time where they have to go out there to war. And so, you know, I want to say that we recognize this as an opportunity for us to share not just our heritage and our culture, but we see this not just as a resolution, but an opportunity to thank you for giving us that opportunity to share our heritage and our culture with this wonderful city here. So I'm going to pass it along to Kong Mac. Here, he'd like to say about 10 seconds is all I gave him.
Go ahead. Take 12.
Stephanie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, all the city leaders, for giving us an opportunity to speak and for recognizing Asian as a community in here. I remember when I first came to America in 1981, there were probably about two Asian businesses in all of Stockton Boulevard. And in the last 30 years, thanks to your hard work, for working tirelessly with the community, now you go on Stockton Boulevard, you see a whole business of Asian business. And without you guys, without you guys leading the charge dedicating to the community, this would not have happened. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ofer Man. I'm here representing the Pacific Islander. Thank you, Mayor Darrell Steinberg. This is an awesome opportunity. It's good to see some new faces, and it's good to see Councilmember Jennings. You did reach out to our community, the P.I. community, and you're still there. Thank you so much, all of you, for recognizing our API Heritage Month. Yes, you're awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have to lower this a little bit. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I share those sentiments. But I come here representing a group of people that were forced out of our homes 75 years ago. The President of the United States, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, signed Executive Order 9066, and we were taken from our homes and lost our constitutional rights. Now I speak to children, and I'm so pleased to say that Sacramento has been one of the areas that is outstanding in allowing many of us to speak to children and the public. We know that history repeats itself, and I did not believe that in my lifetime I would see it repeated so completely as it is today. But unlike 1942, when only two members of the California State Assembly spoke up in defense of the Japanese community, Ralph Dills and John Shelley.
Shelley.
Today, we have you, we have people in political leadership who are speaking out. So I feel so much more assured. But I still want to say that without activities, as you and the city council provide, educating the public, it will happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ellis, please.
Good. Thank you very much. I, you know, I want to recognize all of the community leaders here, and not only that, but also our city staff. There are so many of our city staff. I'll start off with just, you know, the person who makes the trains run on time in my office, Koi Satcher, whose family comes from refugees from Myanmar, that are Myanmar from, I think it was Laos, right? Correct? And is a UC Davis graduate in public policy and political science. To our Police Chief Brian Louie, big round of applause for our Police Chief Brian Louie out there. We have our Assistant City Manager Fran and our City Manager Howard Chan. Big round of applause for them. They're as entrepreneurs, as civic leaders, religious leaders. And just to read two points here on the wherethes. Whereas, one of their earliest records of Asian Pacific Islanders, Americans in the United States dates back to 1763 in New Orleans, Louisiana, where Filipino sailors worked with the Malaya Acapulco Trade Route settlement. So they started in Acapulco, huh? It's a good, fun place. And then whereas Asian Pacific Islander Americans constitute about 19.7% of Sacramento city residents, that represent diverse ancestry that include, but are not limited to. So I apologize if we missed any of them here, but this is the exciting part about Sacramento. They represent Asian Indians, Bangladeshians, Bhutanese, Burmese, Cambodian, Chamorro, Chinese, Taiwanese, Filipino, Mong, Indonesian, Yumyan, Yuji Man, Guamianian, Japanese, Korean, Loaisian, Malaysian, Maldivian, Mongolian, Nepalese, Native Hawaiian, Vietnamese, Okinawan, Pakistani, Samoan, Singaporean, Sri Lankan, Thai, Tong. And there's another, a big list of Pacific Islanders that we also recognize, and I apologize if we missed any, but therefore by the mayor and city council here do recognize Asian Pacific Islanders for their roles, their notable accomplishments and contributions to California, and recognize May 2017 as Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Congratulations, everyone, and we'll come, big round of applause for all the community support that you provided us.
I know. Thank you very much, Councilmember Guetta. I think it was great that you read what you read because it does reflect this incredible mosaic, this incredible diversity history into the present times and in the future. And we're so proud of all of you, to work with all of you, because you're essential to everything we want to accomplish here as a city and as a region. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Hanson briefly, and then we'll take a picture, and then we have to move to the next item. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, first, thank you for being here. I'm really proud of all of you. I've gotten to know you over the years through Capitol and through so many other things. I know some of our great friends couldn't be here tonight, and there are so many wonderful leaders, but I'm glad Councilmember Gara recognized not only our Police Chief and Fran Halbachan, but I also saw Norm Leong walk into the room. He is our chief's, RT's Regional Transit's Chief of Police. And just in the last year, we've added leadership, including Henry Lee at Regional Transit, who's just doing a phenomenal job. And recently Norman Hahm at the Transportation Authority is the interim director. I think that the API community in Sacramento has distinguished itself through its civic pride, its leadership, but its continued effort to give back and to make everyone else's community better, as well as their own, your own. And so I just want to say thank you. This morning, the mayor and I had the pleasure of welcoming 20 or so students from Jinan, China, who are studying Martin Luther King. And they had written poems, and out of the 9,000 poems that were selected, these 20 came to the U.S. because they won, and they're going to Atlanta. But their poems were about peace, about respecting each other who are different, and they were inspired by the work of our own community. And I just think it is a testament to Sacramento and the very things that you mentioned, particularly Muriel and the history that is so painful. But out of that pain has come opportunities for healing, but also to celebrate each other and respect where we are, and hopefully never do it again in that way. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. City Manager Howard Chan would like to say a word.
I will take 10 seconds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Always. Take as long as you want.
As long as you want.
I want to thank Councilwoman Nguyen for her kind words, and that's going to be a hard building to live up to, and I'm grateful to this mayor and council for giving me the opportunity to serve this community that I love, and I will do my best not to let anyone down. So thank you very much.
We know it, and love you. Jeff Harris.
I'll keep it even briefer. I just wanted to thank you very much for your really poignant remarks. They were very meaningful. Thank you.
So we've gone through a lot of struggles, and we continue to fight, but today's a day of celebration. So a big round of applause, and Mr. Mayor, if you want to join me down there.
Oh. Oh. Can I say hi to all the mayor?
Glad to see you.
Koi, Koi, you should be in the photo. Yeah. You should be in the photo. Okay. Sure. Okay. We have a lot of phones here, so. All right. Ready? One, two, three. Big smiles. Awesome.
Whoever's phone is this line, completely, you know about 50 pictures. Friday, he's able to smile this long. Is that everyone?
All right. I think that's, I think that's everyone.
All right. Give her a little applause. Thank you. No problem.
Okay. Thank you all very, very much. Great way to start the evening. We do have a second presentation here, and this is Recognizing Building Safety Month. And I turn it over to our resident contractor, Councilmember Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is a bit of a left turn from talking about the heritage of peoples to the heritage of houses. So, you know, a lot of you probably do know I've been a home builder for 35 years, and I've seen our building codes change dramatically over the course of my career. They say they don't build them like they used to, and I think that's a good thing. A house, a house that's built well today is far safer than the homes of yesteryear. There have been so many changes, you know. In reaction to, you know, the need to conserve energy, we've adopted LED lighting, which is tremendous, and that goes to helping us solve for climate change. We have low-flow toilets, which really help us substantially with our water resources needs. And then when it comes to fire safety, houses today burn at a far lower rate than they used to. In fact, we might put the fire department out of business if we keep moving in the same direction that we're going. Really, houses are in much better condition because building officials like Winfred de Leon pay a lot of attention to this issue and make sure that we move in the right direction. So, Nguyen, could you come up and say a few things about May being recognized as Building Safety Month?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Council, Council, or City Manager Chan. Building Safety Month is really a campaign to bring awareness to not only our citizens, but our builders and our fellow employees and coworkers. This is a promotion to show that we are here to create safe structures, both being efficient, sustainable, and protected. We understand that there's a need for these structures to be safe where we live, work, and play. So some of the activities we're doing this week are, we're putting together a video that promotes Building Safety Month. We are doing a lunch and learn to promote electronic plan review, which is the wave of the future for us. And I'll also be participating in a judging competition at the Casumus River College in regards to helping out the Sacramento Regional Business Exchange. So those are some of the activities that we're participating in, and I'd like to thank you for your support for what we do.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Well, let me present this resolution to you proclaiming May as Building Safety Month here in Sacramento, and thank you for all your work as well.
Thank you. Get the picture here, and... Easy thing to take for granted, building safety, but we never should. I was not photobombing, man. Very good. So there is a third presentation. We're going to hold off until after the consent calendar because even though it's a presentation, it's more of a, more of a staff presentation on a substantive matter before the city. So I'm going to hold off on that. Let's do the consent calendar first.
Okay. So items 1 through 21 are on the consent calendar. There's one correction on item number six. The title states the fiscal year to be 2016-17. Should read 17-18. All the other documents in that item are correct. I have a note from Member Hanson that he will be recusing himself on item number 15. And in addition, we have a couple of people signed up to speak on the consent calendar. Item number three for McWorthy. And then item number 21, we have Pastor Gainesborough and Frank Topping, and someone who submitted a slip with no name.
Good afternoon, panel. The reason I keep speaking to these things for investment, young people, you talk about you're doing things for young people. This is what young people should be involved in. Tell them what is an investment? How much is invested? What they invest in? Buying something is not an investment. Investment is a return. How much did you invest and what's your expectation on refund, return? Then you may get some people that come here like these people just stood up here in the business for themselves. Accounting. If you don't know accounting, you ain't going to never be in a business. Attorney don't make no business. Your accountant make the business. Now, when Ross was here, he was an expert, they say. Here's another guy here, but I don't see him. Why couldn't he get some time if you're going to do something with youth instead of just give them a job during the summer? Teach them something here about investment? Business. Those kids can't go get no job on no Parks and Recreation. Ain't nothing out there in no Parks and Recreation. They just get experience or following the clock and showing up in Parks and Recreation. Give them something here of investments. You have this on this agenda, enough time to say, "Look, here's something we want to sit you down and talk to you about. What is your idea?" Do something that they can take down the road with them and help themselves instead of saying, "Well, come back to the city, and we're going to hire you next summer." The kid know this, he may be able to go out there and bid for something himself. He may be able to go out and say, "Look, hey, you know, I want to start a business in that category." But just saying, "We're going to help you during the summer," and that's it. It's ideology. Help the children, help themselves.
Thank you.
Pastor Gainesborough.
Mayor and council, good to see you all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Photo up there. Maybe enlarged a little bit. Little bit more. There's something wrong with this picture, besides the focus not being there, but it's clear that it's a railroad track, and it's clear that it's a little child. When I shared it to one of the secretaries at the church this afternoon, she is a recent mother, first thing she said was, "Who is it?" And then she said, "Why is it there?" Well, issue 21 is about local hazard mitigation, and a part of that is dealing with catastrophes and crises. And the wording is, "The purpose of the plan is to guide hazard mitigation planning to protect people." Can you repeat that with me? To, I can't hear you. To protect people. Say it again.
Pastor, Pastor, please address this, Council.
Okay. All right. To protect people. Can I hear it? The purpose of the plan is to protect people. Now, $969 million city budget this last year, with an $18 million surplus that I heard about two or three months ago. I wonder about the 13,000 people that have signed up as homeless on city and county food stamps, the 100 homeless children at Grant High School with 11 empty SAC Unified Public Schools that are equipped with restrooms and industrial kitchens. I have this picture here because we are in a homeless crisis, and the hazard mitigation, the greatest hazard, is to protect people even beyond property. I approve the plan, but we need to do more for the homeless in Sacramento.
Thank you, Pastor.
Frank Topping.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I was on the Sacramento County Mental Health Board for six years as secretary, seven years total. Mayor Steinberg will recognize term limits. Well, I timed out. But the Disability Advisory Commission asked me to come recognize people with disabilities on the DAC, and I represented each of those on the Human Services Coordinating Council, who asked me to liaise to the Sacramento County Office of Emergency Services Access and Functional Needs Coordination Advisory Group. This is about evacuating people with disabilities. I would like to point out that the severe weather, cold and freeze, should be listed as catastrophic because that's the only category that lists multiple deaths. We had two of them here in one week. We have one a week throughout Sacramento County, dying all year long, every year, actually. But at severe weather, cold and freeze, and severe weather heat, both of those could be considered catastrophic. I would hope that you would recognize that there are funds available that they mentioned that you can apply for, and I'd hopefully like to encourage you to consider doing that to mitigate our homeless shelter crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Topping.
And then the speaker with no name, is that you, Brayden?
Hi, I think so. I tried to fill out for item number 21, so.
Okay, so this is you then for item 21.
This is going to be pretty short because honestly, I don't know a lot about it. They just kind of explained to me that in really intense elements, it could be hazardous. And so if this could lead to helping homeless people in the very hot or the very cold, then I support it because I support anything that would immediately help homeless people. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. That's, that's the public testimony on the consent calendar. We do have two members that want to speak on items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you. Is Chris Conlon here or somebody from the Parks Department about item number 18? Shannon, maybe? Maybe you. So many of you know that a couple weeks ago, we had a surprise related to tiny tots in Land Park, and I think it may have come up in other parts of the city. But given that we have these contracts before Shannon, I just want to have you clarify that these agreements allow the families that live around the tiny tots facilities to use the city playgrounds that are there as well, that it's a shared use agreement and not an exclusive use agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. It will be open to the public as well as the tiny tots. It's just when we enter into the agreements, we kind of lay out the areas that they would be in, and it's not an exclusive agreement.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying it. I appreciate all the work that you did to help rectify the situation and to find a path forward. I think we're in a good place. With that, I'll move the consent calendar and recuse myself from item 15.
Is there a second? Second on Vice Mayor Jennings, Councilmember Guetta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is also, where did Shannon go? On item number 18, tiny tots. We love tiny tots, you know. But I know that we also have the tiny tots program at the Coloma Center, and they also have the adjacent playground area, which is communal use. Are we working with the Coloma Center and that tiny tots program also to make sure we don't have the same conflict out there?
It's always been...
18? Shannon, maybe. Maybe you. So, many of you know that a couple weeks ago, we had a surprise related to tiny tots in Land Park, and I think it may have come up in other parts of the city. But given that we have these contracts before Shannon, I just want to have you clarify that these agreements allow the families that live around the tiny tots facilities to use the city playgrounds that are there as well, that it's a shared use agreement and not an exclusive use agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. It will be open to the public as well as the tiny tots. It's just when we enter into the agreements, we kind of lay out the areas that they would be in, and it's not an exclusive agreement.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying it. I appreciate all the work that you did to help rectify the situation and to find a path forward. I think we're in a good place. With that, I'll move the consent calendar and recuse myself from item 15.
Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
Second on Vice Mayor Jennings, Councilmember Brigetta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is also, where did Shannon go? On item number 18, tiny tots. We love tiny tots, you know. But I know that we also have the tiny tots program at the Coloma Center, and they also have the adjacent playground area, which is communal use. Are we working with the Coloma Center and that tiny tots program also to make sure we don't have the same conflict out there?
It's always been, anybody can use the facility. So, we've never encountered any issues in there. But we are definitely circling back with all the tiny tot providers just to make sure correct signage is installed around the tiny tot areas, especially to make sure folks know you can't bring your dogs in and no smoking. So, yeah, with entering into these agreements, we usually sit down with them and find out, you know, any issues that are going on. So,
Great.
We'll circle back with them and make sure.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Shannon.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much. Public testimony and council questions, having been spoken and answered, asked and answered. A motion and a second. All those in favor of the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Aye, I meant to say aye. Passes 7, 7 to nothing. Very good. Alright, before we move to discussion items 22 to 24, I want to take presentation number 3 and invite to the podium Erica Kishiri, who, if you have not met Erica, is the Mayor and Council's Director of Workforce Development. And she is spearheading the Thousand Strong Initiative, supported by this council, with an initial appropriation, I believe, of $950,000. And we make this presentation tonight not just to update you, but as Erica will tell you in a moment, to solicit your help. Because in order to reach our goal, we need employers and we need students. But I think it is, I already believe it's going to be easier to recruit the students, although still a lot of work. But we need to recruit employers. So, the public employers that are in the audience, including the various agencies of the city government, and anybody else who owns a business or represents an employer out there, I hope you're listening to the following presentation. It is just the beginning of the outreach that we intend to do to reach this audacious but important goal. Erica, we recruited from Washington DC, from the National Chamber of Commerce to Sacramento. And she is a great addition to our city team with a most important focus. So, I welcome you, and please tell the council and the public how they can get engaged in this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city manager. Thanks for having me here today. I heard if I get through this quickly, I get my name on a water tower. So, I'll try to be as efficient as possible with this.[774.63][774.63](laughter) So, just to give you a little bit of background, these are just four articles that I pulled off from news stories that have come across my desk. What it really shows is that the world of work is changing. How we used to do business in the past won't really get kids where they need to go when it comes to our automated future, or the fact that businesses are now cannibalizing themselves to survive. So, how do we make sure that youth can transition from these theoretical pathways that we've created of the past to real pathways out there that get them connected to jobs? Third goal then, and I like how the mayor said, "Audacious," it really is an audacious goal, to see how close we can get to 1,000 paid, year-long internship experience. And the thing about this is that we're opening up access to a diverse array of populations. So, these aren't just the usual suspects, right? Those overachievers that are gonna get these internships anyways. Really wanna make sure we're addressing those also with barriers to employment along the way. And how we're gonna do it is really by working together as a community, pooling investments, connecting partners, to making sure that we are maximizing impact. That way, our dollars can go further than they did in the past, and we can really build upon kind of the unique things that certain programs and people can build, can bring to this project. For example, I know we spoke about Henry Lee a second ago with the very first presentation. And hearing from him, he is committing RT to help, for example, get the students' transportation. So, as we have these internships, in order to take away that barrier, we're working together to make sure they have access to free RT transit over the course of the year, or their engagement in the program.
Thank you, Jay.
So, the program elements are what make this program unique, are three high-level things I want to run through quickly. What makes us able to make this large-scale very quickly are workforce preparation, case management, and employer supports. Workforce preparation, we are not just saying, "Come, youth, sign up," and then we place them with an employer. We're putting them through 40 hours of that soft skills and professional skills training. We hear constantly from employers, "Man, we just need a person who can show up on time, who can think critically, who can basically work in teams." And what we're doing is giving them that, planting that seed with those 40 hours of work skills training before we place them with the employer. So, during the summer, they start off basically being front-loaded, working almost full-time, so about 35 to 40 hours of this paid internship. And then, over the course of this school year, it's about 6 to 10 hours, usually depending on the age and their ability, the flexibility of their schedule. So, that workforce preparation, starting with that work skills training, is a key component of this before we place them with an employer. The second piece is case management. We don't just place them with employer and walk away and say, "Good luck to you." These are high school students looking for sometimes, at the first time, to connect with employers. So, how do we make sure they are connecting and have all the things that they need as they go along the way? So, we have a community of community-based organizations and nonprofits who are committing to providing that case management throughout the term of this internship. Case management includes facilitating wraparound services. Some of these youth that we want to work with need full-service providers, providers that can connect them with things, whether it's clothing, whether it's information, whether it's babysitting, et cetera. We want to make sure there is one point of contact that the student can connect with that is full service. Addressing challenges on the job, I mean, we've all had it at the very beginning. If you can think back to your first internship and your first job, we all have challenges. How can they have that one point of contact that they can sit on the side with and say, "Hey, these are the challenges I'm facing. Can you help me address them?" And then, mapping and tracking progress. The whole idea behind this is to make sure that the youth have a goal, and we can help them to get to that goal, and they could see how this actually works towards getting to where they want to be in the future. And I always put et cetera there because there's many more things that come with case management. We did want to make sure that along the way, we're not just stepping back and leaving the youth alone. We're actually saying, "Hey, we're gonna be with you. We're gonna support you to make sure you make it throughout." Now, one thing that definitely kind of makes this program much different than other programs across the country is that we're really focusing on employer supports. This is how we get the employers basically hooked to take on a high school intern. A lot of them think about college interns, or those that have masters and PhD. And we're saying, "No, can we connect with youth earlier on?" So, a few employer supports that we are offering as we do talk to these employers are handling HR functions. Some employers are like, "Man, I really love that back office support. That way, that it can free up kind of my services for other things." So, we're like, "Yes, if you need that, we'll definitely provide that for you." Recruiting and matching youth to available positions. If you say, "Hey, I just want you to send me someone who's qualified," we can do that for you as well. Training youth for key technical needs. What we find is employers are now saying, "Hey, I just need someone who's really good at PowerPoint. Can you find me a training provider that can go on the side and teach this youth or young adult PowerPoint?" So, we write that down. We make sure that we get that connected. And the last piece, and this is the piece that a lot of employers are really enjoying, is that we're going to help them structure the internship program. This isn't just about putting Suzie in the corner and having her follow away things. It's about making it a real experience for them, so they can network with employers and really understand what it's like on the job. So, we're working with employers to say, "Hey, here's how you can work with them for six hours a week if that's how their structure is during the school year." And the way we're making this happen, again, it's not starting from scratch necessarily, but sort of layering three different approaches. The first is launching new year-round paid internships, working with employers who say, "Yes, I want to do this. I've never had a high school internship program before. Can you help me do this?" So, we are working with them one by one to launch those new year-round paid internships. The second is expanding existing year-round paid internships. There are some great programs that already exist out there. We want to see how can we build capacity to make them a little bit, make them either bigger or longer in case they're seasonal. And the last one is stacking seasonal internships to create year-round paid experiences. There are very good summer programs already out there. We want to say, "Hey, if you've already gone through summer at City Hall, you've kind of had that work skills training infused in the system, you've had some on-the-job experience, why stop there? How about, instead of having a cliff, we allow them to continue on throughout the rest of the year?" So, we are stacking those seasonal experiences so that all the students have access year-round to employment opportunities. And just because I get this question over and over again, I want to go ahead and put it in this slide as, "Okay, but there's so many more things that employers can do." That is correct. But for this year, for this target, we really wanted to focus on three areas: career prep, pre-employment training, and onboarding to employers, with the idea that eventually we get employers engaged all the way throughout the value stream here. So, add-in-on job shadowing, for example, or any other mentoring program that really builds from career awareness all the way through retention. In order to do this, as the mayor said, we really do need you. We need everyone on board to help support this effort. And one of the ways, or two of the ways that we're doing it, the first is one-on-one conversations. We will be reaching out, and by "we," my colleague Andrew right here, who's been instrumental in this work, I'll be reaching out to each of your offices to schedule with you and/or your staff, kind of a more in-depth briefing about what is going on here, and also see how we can make sure we are supporting your district in this work, and we're making sure that we are hitting key schools, key targets, et cetera, that really benefit your districts. So, please answer those emails as they come out so we can get that on the schedule. And the second is really cheesy, but I grew up playing sports, so this one had to go on there. This was teamwork makes the dream work. We need all hands on deck to make this happen. Our numbers are growing. Right now, we're at about rounding around 400 students who are registered to go, and we have about 250 employers who have committed slots for this internship program. And we're just beginning the employer recruitment, and we have a lot more recruiting to go for the students. So, if we don't get to 1,000, we're gonna get pretty gosh darn close, but it really is going to take all of you guys kind of investing in the effort. And one way we're gonna help make it easy for you is we're gonna have little business cards, so you don't have to carry around a sheet of paper, little business cards that you guys can put in your pocket. And as you meet a student, as you meet an employer, you can hand them the business card and say, "Hey, you guys should sign up right here on www.thousandstrong.org," that is thousand the word and not thousand the number, to make this happen, and we will follow up accordingly. So, I wanted to go ahead and put my contact information up there. Please visit the website if you want more information. Also, I mean, all you guys have my personal City Hall email address as well. Feel free to reach out, but we'll definitely be reaching out to you to see how we can work together to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Erica. I want to thank Andrew Keough appropriately, who's new with us. I want to thank Zach Yates as well for really helping us launch, and Bina Lefkovitz as well, who before Erica got here in March, helped really put the foundation together of what you're now taking and really running with, and Jay Sheneer and his team as well. But the bottom line is, I gotta tell you, I don't view this as a program. I view this as a philosophy. I view this as a way the city and the community ought to operate. We're not, we're separate jurisdiction from the school district. We're not the business community. But we are the link between the school districts and the business and employer community. And this has the potential to be transformational if we view it not just as a program, but as a philosophy in the way we intend to do business. And so, I'm pleased that in the first days, we're already at 250 or so employer slots and 400 students, and 1,000 may be a reach, but we've taken on tougher.
We'll see how far we can get, Mr. Mayor.
We'll see how far we can get. Councilmember Sheneer.
Thanks, Mayor. I think this is great, obviously. Just really one quick question. I know we're recruiting for summer at City Hall, which is a separate recruitment for what you're doing. I also know we're well over 200 young people who have applied for the 100 positions, so I'm assuming that you're working with our folks so we can slot those other 100 in.
I am. We call it summer at City Hall, Thousand Strong Partner. So, working closely with Christina Pallone over in that department. And what she is doing is, once they are on board and they've been interviewed, she is providing them with information if they want to continue on. So, we're definitely using that as a leverage point to add to those numbers.
Great. Thank you.
And I would ask each of the members, if you would, to make time on your calendars, with your staffs, of course, but you personally, to meet with Erica and our team, because you know the employers in your districts, and students, obviously, in your districts as well. And your engagement is going to help us get to the number that we aspire to. Anybody else? Vice Mayor Jennings.
Yeah, just very quickly, I congratulate you and the staff on a great job in a short period of time. I think it's because your roots are from Washington DC, where other great people come from.[1501.85][1501.85](laughter) We won't, we won't mention any names, but anyway, so the program will start effectively for students?
Kicks off June 5.
Okay. And so, now would be the time, from now to June 5, would be the time to identify students and potential employer slots to get to that 1,000 number.
Correct. The current deadline says May 19, but we'll probably push it back a week. But we're really trying to get that as our hard deadlines so we can start the matching process. For employers, you have until the beginning of June to get them on board. We will also be kind of lightweight recruiting throughout the rest of the year because there may be some employers who really just have a summer/fall internship and need to make sure we're back ending that with one in the spring of next year. So, continuous process.
And the city's gonna participate, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you also have an intern that will be there as well. So, we hope you all get an intern if you do want one.
So, I definitely want to sign up as far as being able to meet with you and trying to help with the employers, and of course, with the students, and trying to make sure we increase the number of students. Got some great ideas for you. And so, I'm signing up right now to say I want to meet, and I'll make time and prioritize the opportunity to meet with you. I think this is an incredible opportunity, Mayor. We're talking about developing our future workforce, and those that will one day sit in these seats and lead this great city. And so, I think this is just an incredible opportunity for the city, and I'd like to thank you for your leadership in bringing this forward and hiring an incredible young lady and staff that's gonna push this to greatness. So, we may not hit our 1,000 this year, even though I'm committing to hitting the 1,000.
I like it.
But even if we don't, it's an incredible idea that has great merit and great promise. So, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to just give your email again for the folks, for the employers watching at home, or is that, that was on the presentation?
If they just email info@thousandstrong.org, what I like about that doesn't get buried in my inbox.
Got it. Okay.
And I could actually go and find it.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erica. Terrific. Okay, let us move on now to file item 22.
This is a City Council Joint Housing Authority item for the approval of loan commitment for the St. Francis Terrace and Village Park projects.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. Ann Nichols, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The report before you requests approval of a $1,247,000 loan commitment for the rehabilitation of St. Francis Terrace, and a $1,022,000 loan commitment for the rehabilitation of Village Park Apartments. Mercy Housing will be requesting a single 9% tax credit allocation for both projects to achieve positive cash flow to support operating expenses and efficiencies in the financing and rehabilitation of the projects. St. Francis Terrace and Village Park are existing affordable apartment complexes that were built in the early 1990s, and are owned and operated by Mercy Housing California. St. Francis Terrace consists of 48 units and is located in the midtown area. Village Park consists of 50 units and is in the Johnson Heights neighborhood. Substantial interior improvements will be made at both sites, including new kitchens, bathrooms, and flooring. All units will have energy-efficient appliances and low-flow plumbing. Exterior improvements at St. Francis will include upgrades to the community room and kitchen, office laundry facility, common interiors, and installation of new playground equipment, raised garden beds, and bicycle parking fixtures. There will be significant renovation to the underground parking garage, which currently has water intrusion issues, new roof covering, major building systems, landscape irrigation and drainage systems, security cameras and access control systems, among other improvements. Exterior improvements at Village Park will include a 1,000-square-feet expansion of the community room, which will have a new kitchen and restroom. New playground equipment, raised garden beds, site lighting, and water heaters will be installed. Upgrades will be made to the wrought iron perimeter fencing, pedestrian gate access control, and vehicle security gates. The chain-link fences will be replaced with wooden fencing. New installation or repairs will be made to the siding on all of the buildings, parking lot, landscape irrigation and drainage systems, security cameras, and access control systems, among other improvements. Mercy Housing California will be renovating the project and providing services to the residents of St. Francis Terrace. residents of St. Francis Terrace and Village Park. Services include temporary relocation, property management, and resident services. A minimum of 16 hours per week of onsite resident services will be provided at St. Francis Terrace, and 24 hours per week of onsite resident services will be provided at Village Park. The proposed financing includes tax credit equity, restructured existing loans from the agency and housing community development, general partnership equity, and new agency loans comprised of $2,269,000 in home and housing successor funds. In closing, staff is requesting approval of $2,269,000 in loan commitments to the St. Francis and Village Park Apartments. Stephen Dawes and Jeff Riley of Mercy Housing California are with us, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
We do have public testimony on this item, correct?
Just one, and it's Mac Worthy.
Mr. Worthy.
Let's go again. We talk about business, why couldn't we say who owns it, or is it a nonprofit organization? Ninety percent of the time, it's a nonprofit organization. And I only heard 48 units, but the other part I couldn't hear. But anyway, $2 million, $2 million in what have this project been doing all this time that it's in shape and a condition that it needs this kind of money for refurbishment, when it's only about 20 or 30 years old? So what we're saying that more should be brought out about these type of projects when you are spending city money into nonprofit organizations. We know the city is a nonprofit organization too, but we gotta show kids, just like the young lady said, talking about kids, learn something. These are things that you sit down and show them the difference between nonprofit and profitable loss. And you educate them and prepare them to go out and perform own jobs, but if you hide this type of stuff here, make an agreement behind closed doors and come in here and say a couple of words, they spend $2 million of city taxpayers' money, it's critical. It's critical. Where are you going? We know it's a lot of bond money involved, and here a lot of nonprofit organization money, which is accountable for here, but we haven't seen a audit of money yet from no entity that produced money to this city that you have invested in in the past 10 years. We've seen audit of administration, but when we say dollars coming in, and where are those dollars going, you do is not have that audit here. Now, I've been here almost four years now, and I hadn't heard it, so where is that, when is that audit coming? Now, you promised something on SMUR, is that's a good one to start with, which we got federal law in utilities, which that's just energy. How much money are you producing on a monthly base, and what's going into labor and what's going into nonlabor? Talk to the people here, right, man, we need jobs.
So, Mr. Worthy, I just wanna note that all the questions you just asked are answered in the item. If you read the item that's in your agenda, all of the questions are answered.
Thank you. Are there any council questions on the item? Is there a motion on the item?
So moved.
Moved and seconded with enthusiasm.
On behalf of Councilmember Warren, we're excited.
Yes. Councilmember Warren is absent tonight, but there's an important project in his district, and, you know, we had a workshop several weeks ago about the need for affordable housing. Here we go. Rehabilitation to improve and increase our housing stock. Thank you to the redevelopment agency. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. The motion passes by a vote of six to nothing. Okay, let's move on to the main item for the evening, and that is the beginning discussion of the 2017-18 proposed city budget. We begin with file item 23. This is a, is this a receivable file or just a, this is a receivable file?
It's a consider, but same thing.
It's a consider. We won't receive it, but we may consider it. Okay. City manager, most important thing that a governing body does, in my view, is pass a budget.
Absolutely.
And appropriately, you've left the dais to present. Welcome to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am pleased to present to you this evening our proposed FY 2017-18 budget. You know, this being my first budget as city manager, I've been struck by the complexity of this budget and all the sheer number of things that have to come into alignment to create the city's financial plan for the coming year. It's, I must say, it's been a whirlwind. I have some good news to share, and we have a balanced budget. We're projecting substantial growth in the city's major revenue sources over the next five years. Our economic uncertainty reserve has exceeded the council's goal of 10%, just by a little bit. Our local economy is continuing to recover from the Great Recession. I wanna share a factoid with this group that Assistant City Manager John Dangberg shared with us, and it's that we currently have over $750 million in construction activity as a result of the Golden One Center and that project. And equally as important, over the last two years, I believe the timeframe was, we've seen building valuation increase by over $180 million in the downtown area. You know, having said all that, we do have some financial challenges on the horizon that bring to the forefront this notion of budget sustainability. We're facing sharp increases in employee pension costs due to the much-publicized CalPERS interest earnings adjustments. The budget team will discuss this issue in greater detail later in the presentation. A majority of our labor agreements are expiring this year, which brings a level of uncertainty to employee costs going forward. We're currently in negotiations with eight of our 11 employee groups. Our Measure U half-cent sales tax expires in 2019 and represents over $45 million in revenue annually for city services. Given these challenges, you'll see that the increase in general fund expenditures is largely due to expected salary and benefit costs for existing positions. Positions that were added to address critical workload were either offset by revenues or reimbursements from other funding sources. While the staff has worked tirelessly to prepare this budget over the past few months, this is just the beginning of the council's budget deliberation process. There are additional hearings scheduled to discuss the impact of new revenue streams associated with the regulation of the cannabis industry, an economic development update focused on business attraction, growth, and retention. We'll also hear from CalPERS directly about the future of employee pension costs. There will also be a robust discussion on council budget priorities with the final budget adoption to occur in mid-June. It's important that you and our residents know that even with these challenges, I'm optimistic about the city's future. We continue to benefit from positive economic growth, and over the next year, we continue to leverage our public investments that promote economic vitality, spur job growth, and stimulate new investment throughout the city. The delivery of this budget to this council is the culmination of months and months of work throughout the organization, and I wanna thank the department staff that's here in the audience and here at the staff table as well, especially the budget staff, for the countless hours they spent in shepherding this document to where it is today to completion. And so with that, I wanna turn it over to Don Holm, our budget manager, to go over a high-level overview of the budget, proposed budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the fiscal year 2017-18 proposed budget. It's a billion dollars this year. $449 million, or almost $450 million from the general fund, $293 million from our enterprise funds, and $290 million from our other funds. As you can see, that we've also identified the CIP funding. We'll be talking about the CIP further on the afternoon of the 16th. The concept of the budget was to address identified needs of the city's operations with as minimal impact to the general fund as we possibly could. So wherever we were adding positions, we were looking, what revenues could we bring in, where could we charge other funds, are we providing services to our enterprise funds, are there grants and other opportunities? So the positions added are very limited and address pretty much development activity, the need for additional code enforcement, park maintenance, and to address regulatory requirements in our utility funds. Revenues, we have $464 million in general fund revenues included in the proposed budget. The chart before you takes you prior to the recession to post-recession. These are, what we're reflecting in this chart are just our property tax, sales tax, and utility users' tax, as these make up over 62% of the general fund revenues. These are our largest increment of general fund revenues, and as you can see, we took a pretty significant dip starting in '10, but as you can see in '18, we have exceeded our pre-recession revenues and are still projecting healthy revenue growth in the future. Property taxes make up about 32% of our general fund revenue, and those come from the sale of properties, and that's really where we're seeing the biggest increase. It's from the churning of properties, from increasing property values, from the new homes coming online. Sales tax is our next highest revenue at 17%, and then the utility users' tax, which has remained primarily flat, but it's at 13% for the breakdown on that. What we're trying to show here is that we've broken out the three components, property, utility users, and sales taxes. As I was explaining, the utility users' tax is primarily flat. However, during the recession, sales tax actually dipped below our utility users' tax. So it's just kinda to give you an idea on how different they reacted during the recession, and that they're all basically higher than they were prior to the recession at this point in time. While we continue to experience strong revenue growth, we're still challenged with expenditure growth, as the city manager indicated. This chart represents the impact of the general fund as a result of the CalPERS earnings rate change that they approved in December, reducing their earnings rate from 7.5% to 7%. In fiscal year '23, we're projecting, based on the estimates we've been receiving from PERS at this time, that the city's liability, pension liability, will be approximately $150 million for all funds. Other funds represent about 14% of the city's pension liability, which is why we're really focused on the general fund. The proposed budget general fund forecast, as shown in this chart, represents revenues less expenditures, which is our measure for budget sustainability. This chart basically takes fiscal year by fiscal year and basically looks at revenues less our expenditures to get to a surplus deficit, which is representing that beginning in '19, we're projecting a slight deficit. With the city's pension costs doubling over the term of the forecast, despite significant revenue growth, our expenditures are anticipated to exceed revenues again. It is important to note that while we're in negotiations with the majority of our employee labor groups, this forecast does not include estimates for future labor growth. Measure U has provided us with significant resources. We are grateful to the citizens of the city for approving this measure. Included in the budget is $58.9 million from Measure U Resources to restore, to provide funding for restorations that have been previously proved for parks, police, and fire. It includes the maintenance of effort for our library. It includes funding for animal care services contracts. And in this year's budget, we are recommending $13.6 million in one-time expenditures for improvements to our parks, community centers, libraries, and for the purchase of public safety equipment. It's hard to believe that the expiration of Measure U is just two years away. The original intent of the measure was to restore services until the general fund recovered from the recession. However, with base labor growth and the need for additional services, this will not be possible based on our forecast. While the Budget and Audit Committee is discussing potential renewal options, this forecast represents the expiration in 2019. The difference between this forecast and the last one is this forecast incorporates the use of available one-time fund balance. It includes the $9 million set aside that was done from the fiscal year 16-year-end resources to address youth, neighborhood services, affordable housing, and transportation, and this includes the loss, the potential loss of Measure U resources. While one-time revenues are not an ideal way to address budget shortfalls, the projected shortfalls in fiscal years '19 and '20 could be addressed with the strategic use of available fund balance.
Can we, can I go back? Talk about that chart, 'cause that's the, that's the key chart that everyone ought to keep in their jacket pocket at all times here as we're deliberating this budget. Does, do these numbers include the PERS estimate that you described a moment ago?
Yes, this includes the estimates based on what we've received from PERS to date.
Okay. So with the PERS estimates, even if Measure U passes, we're projected to have a deficit of $26 million by FY '23?
Correct.
Just to interpret it in the right way. Okay.
Important to note that fiscal year '25 is actually the last year of the phase-end of the PERS rate change, so there's still two more years of increases beyond what we show in our forecast.
Oh, let's not look at them.
Okay. We won't. We didn't show it.
Okay.
I just have a quick clarifying question. Don, on your last chart, you had 58-point-something million for Measure U.
Oh.
58.9. Why is that 58.9 in the budget, and then in outgoing years, 43, and then 50?
So the 58 this year is because we're doing 13.6 in ongoing, or in one-time Measure U capital expenditures. We aren't planning or projecting capital expenditures beyond that. What this shows as far as the loss of Measure U is actually the cost to retain, what the general fund would have to absorb or reduce based on the FTE that we would have to eliminate if Measure U has not passed.
So it's not taking, just so I understand, it's not the loss of revenue by not having Measure U, it's the loss of programs that we're funding through Measure U at that point?
The 50.3, the 50.3 million represents the ongoing cost of those positions that have been restored by Measure U at...
Right, so if we were, I'm sorry, but if we were to continue Measure U, this 50 would turn into 58 as far as, not the loss of Measure U, but the revenue projection, it would be a $58 million shift in...
No, the difference between the 50 and the 58 is the 13.6 is one-time Measure U from the reserve. So we're using one-time fund balance. We're not using ongoing revenues for that.
I get that. And so it's former years of Measure U that we've built up the reserve.
Carried over, right.
Carry over?
Right. I don't have...
I'm just looking at, what's the annual revenue off of Measure U at this point?
50.
We can be consistent, because when we come back, we're gonna have to talk about that.
Right.
Right now, for '17...
Your mic.
For '17-18, it's estimated at 46.542, $46.5 million. And then what we've built into the projection for '18-19 is only three months, but we have it growing at about...
3%.
Jason, do you...
3%.
It grows a little bit differently than our regular sales tax because it has different components.
Right.
So you could make an assumption that it could continue to grow at that rate, so it would be slightly higher than the 50.3, which are the programmed expenditures.
Yeah, it's between 46 and 50 and growing if it continued, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. One other clarity question, 'cause I think understanding this chart as sort of the basis is really important for how we proceed on the budget. You do have a projected ending fund balance, the end of fiscal year '18, which is the year we're talking about, of $20 million.
Correct.
And you said at the beginning of your presentation, I believe, that the city manager is recommending X million of one-time expenditures. What was that X?
The one-time expenditures was from Measure U, and then from, on the general fund, it's for capital. So that's already built into the proposed budget. That is not separate from this.
Okay, so there is, that's good. So there is 20, and again, we wanna be prudent, there's reserves, there's preparation, all that, but there is arguably at least $20 million of one-time money available to consider, either to invest in one-time, or a combination of one-time, ongoing, and/or to carry over for future use or bulk up the reserve. Just so, just wanna make sure that everyone understands the choice points here. Okay, thank you. Keep going.
The city's enterprise and other funds are balanced. However, over the next five years... However, over the next five years, two of our enterprise funds are projecting financial challenges. The solid waste fund is projecting a deficit in the last year of their five-year forecast and will need to consider a rate increase in the future to address increasing costs and less-than-assumed growth. In the storm drainage fund, while not negative in the out-years, it is challenged to address ongoing capital needs and maintenance, given the last rate increase for this fund was in 1996. Staff's still continuing to evaluate options for bringing something forward. There are several scheduled meetings between now and the scheduled budget adoption, which will be heard on June 6 by the Budget and Audit Committee and June 13 by the full city council. As the city manager indicated, May 23 is going to be a lot of information and a lot of discussion on our council's priorities. As the city manager stated, development of the budget is a long and complex process that involves the assistance of staff from all departments. I want to thank the city manager and finance director for their leadership throughout the process, the department fiscal staff for their hard work and responsiveness to all of my quick turnaround requests, and last but not least, none of this would be possible without the amazing budget team I have the privilege of leading. There are representatives from all departments available to address any questions council may have. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Appreciate it. We do have several items of public testimony, then I know I want to make some overriding or just some, an overall remarks on Councilmember Hanson is up as well, but let's do the public testimony first. I'll say a few words, I'll turn it over to Steve. Go ahead.
Okay, so we have two that have signed up to speak. First one is Rivka Sass, and then Faygo.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Rivka Sass, and I'm the Director of the Sacramento Public Library Authority, and I'm here representing the 300,000-plus library cardholders who live in the city of Sacramento to thank you for addressing the structural deficit that the Sacramento Public Library has faced over the last several years, and to begin the long and arduous process of making us whole. And in the interest of time, everyone has agreed that I can be the spokesperson, so that's why I'm here. I really do want to thank you. The library, as you know, is a key and critical component to our community. Right now, there are 200-plus people listening to an author speak across the street. We are the free-range educators for our community. We employ a lot of youth. If you attend our authority board meetings, last month, you would have heard two teenagers who talked about the difference that the library made in their lives, both of whom are going off to college in the fall, one with a full-ride scholarship to the University of California Merced. Those are just small examples of what the library is able to do. Your support is critical to keep us going, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rivka, for all you do and reminding us how important the library is to everything we do. Sir?
So as I'm looking at the budget analysis, and I'm seeing that just within the next three years, we're going to start being in a major deficit. I think the city needs to look at how they're spending some of this money that they're spending. You know, it's great to give Sacramento a facelift, as we like to call it, with all this new development and redeveloping things that have already been there forever, because we think it needs to look nicer. But with that much of a deficit looking, coming up really short, I think we need to reanalyze and not necessarily focus as much as on aesthetics, as making sure that we have the funds there to take care of our people more. And also, there's a great way that the city could be saving quite a bit of money right now, and that would be by repealing the camping ordinance, because that way you don't have to spend the money to keep enforcing that, which incurs court fines and other fees, as well as law enforcement time and energy. You know, we need to start looking at ways to not only save money, but improve the lives of the citizens at the same time. And spending money on things like harassing people for sleeping, confiscating their property, storage of that property, and facelifting really expensive buildings just because it looks nicer that way, I don't think that's the best way to save money when we're getting close to being out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a couple remarks, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Hanson. I want to thank you for a very thorough presentation. It's, you know, the proverbial good news and bad news. The city budget is in good shape, and in the current year, we actually have surplus. But there are some significant clouds, as they say, on the horizon. We have to pass, go back to the voters, and renew Measure U. And even with the hopeful passage of Measure U, we still have the pension issue to worry about. But there are also some opportunities that I want to make sure that during this budget cycle, we focus on, and we've talked about this both at the Budget and Audit Committee and in our meetings. We must use this budget cycle to get a range of potential revenue around marijuana. Today, the Law and Legislation Committee took up the issue of delivery. This is on top of the action the council's already taken around cultivation and manufacturing. And, you know, this may be controversial issue. The council has decided to step forward and do this in the right way. The permit fees are going to provide significant dollars for mitigation, including law enforcement. But then there's going to be the tax revenue. And even though it may be difficult now to ascertain what we're likely to get in this business, we have to consult with the folks at the state level who may be confronting the same conundrum in terms of estimating revenue, other people, other folks in the city, the appropriate consultants, whatever it takes, so that we can build in at least a range into those long-term fiscal projections as well, because it's only right that if we're going to be prudent, which we always must be, there needs to at least be a balance between the fiscal risks, but also the fiscal opportunities. And the other issue that we must confront is economic development. And we have got a great economic development team, but I am looking forward to Mr. Dangberg's presentation on, I hope, the 23rd of May and our council retreat the first week of June, to both look at the history of economic development in this city, how we were once staffed, and our capacity today, because you can only ask one or two or three people to be the point of the spear for every single major economic development initiative that goes on in this city. And if we are serious about growing this city, we shouldn't contract it all or farm it all out to the regional economic development organization as good and as effective as they are. Council has a lot of pent-up energy around what are you doing in our districts with vacant parcels and development opportunities that go unrealized, because we don't have as much capacity as we should to grow this economy. And I would like us to have a discussion, both this month and next month, about what economic growth would mean, looking at all the models on the revenue side, because the more we spend in this area, potentially, the more we may realize in terms of revenue down the line. I want to also thank the community and thank the members of the council and the staff for participating in the budget forums that we had throughout the city. We did eight budget forums. I want to thank Mr. Silva, our independent budget analyst, Scott White, for my team and the good people from Neighborhood Services. We had a lot of people come out, hundreds in total.
Yes, America, there's one more.
And there's one more tomorrow night in East Sacramento. So I'm going to try to drop by if I can. I don't know if I'm going to be able to, I'm going to try. There's one more in East Sacramento tomorrow night. We've also done a budget poll, and we want to take all this input, present it to the council on the 23rd of May, and they tell me that it was the most extensive budget outreach that we've had in recent memory, in terms of actually engaging the public in each of the districts, and I want to thank you for all participating and helping to lead that. And so, this is my first budget as well, Mr. City Manager, our first together. And I'm confident that together, we'll get it right. We've got to make some strategic investments, and at the same time, you know, make sure that we are, we are set up for a good, solid fiscal future in this city as well. So that's a good start. Councilmember Hanson? Okay. Very good. Let's move to the next item.
Our next item is 24. It's the 17-18 proposed budget for a variety of our departments.
I'm still down home. I'm not sure after yet. The item before you is what we consider our consolidated departmental report. Basically, these are departments that, we're going to cover all the departments that don't have Measure U, and basically, it comes down to parks, fire, and police, which we'll present next week, and we'll also cover the CIP next week. The departments without changes, we're not going to spend a lot of time talking about, that would be the mayor council budget, the city attorney, and our economic development department. There are no significant changes proposed in those departments. The general fund augmentation chart before you summarizes the positions that we've added on the general fund side, and as you can see, even though we've added 22.6 positions, we have an ongoing cost of $172,000. As I explained previously, the positions that we've added have been offset by revenues and reimbursements from other funds. The $172,000 in ongoing costs are the re-elimination of revenues that we're no longer going to be receiving in our treasurer's office and in human resources. The one-time expenditure proposed in the human resources department is to bring on consultants to rewrite our exams and to bring back our supervisory and management academies that were cut during the recession. I think it's important that we grow our employees and provide them with the opportunity, and I think this funding will help our HR department restore that program to provide those services. The community development department, we're adding the positions, six positions, in to address development activity, code enforcement, and for animal care pet adoptions. In finance, we have two positions, one going into procurement to address workload and one in our public infrastructure finance team to address increasing development activity. IT has the largest number of positions being added, and that is to address a lot of significant business systems we're going to be changing, and in our utilities department, as well as our permitting system and community development, and increases in staffing to our 311 call center to improve customer service and dispatching for utility operations. So we often forget to talk about our other funds, because there is more than just the general fund. In Measure U, we're adding, we're proposing $100,000 for a spay-neuter contract with the SPCA. In risk, we're going to be adding a position to oversee benefit audits, and we've included funding for pre-employment fingerprinting, which we're not currently doing. The utilities position will address, utilities positions will address increased regulatory requirements, preventative maintenance, implementation of a security master plan, grant management, and will support the replacement of the city's customer information system. And in the enterprise funds, the million dollars you're seeing there is really to support the positions you saw in IT and the general fund. We add the positions in the general fund, and then we get reimbursements from the enterprise funds to offset our costs. As we discussed in the mid-year report, the city has 12 libraries, and the Sacramento Public Library Authority's been managing these libraries on a budget originally established for nine libraries, while we now have 12 libraries. For the first time since the recession, the general fund contribution to the library is being increased by $1.25 million in the proposed budget. We're working with the library and staff to continue evaluating the library funding needs, given the changes approved for Measure X and the increased contributions included in this budget and the five-year forecast. The mid-year review in the fiscal year '19 budget will include additional information on the library funding needs, if the funding included is not adequate to meet their requirements for providing programs and services. One note, because it does make a change to convention, cultural, and leisure, and the citywide and community support budget, we are moving, the arts budget was kind of split. It was split between convention and cultural services and the citywide budget. So what we've done is we've taken the funding for the Metro Arts Commission and moved it out of the citywide budget and over to convention and cultural services, so it's all in one Finally, the city's been working on the consolidation of our information technology staff in an effort to ensure a citywide approach to business solutions and improved service delivery. The proposed budget includes the transfer of the public safety IT positions to the IT department. This change completes the IT staffing consolidation we started a year ago. There are staff here from all of the various departments, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some public testimony, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hanson first.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have some specific questions. I think, because Shirley's not here, we're doing the first. First, on the community development department, I was, and Mr. City Manager, something I'd like you to look at before we adopt the final. I noticed that we've asked the city animal shelter to raise a certain amount of funds to pay for an adoption coordinator. Given some of the community interest in sponsoring adoptions, I believe that we've taken in fee revenue that could support that position. So I'd like you to, instead of asking the shelter to raise that money, to just fund that out of fees for the shelter. And I think that there are so many needs at the shelter, but they continue to outstrip basic performance metrics by exceeding expectations, that this would be a really good investment to continue to move those critters along into positive, productive homes. The other thing, I just, Winfried might be able to answer this if staff can't, but I continue to hear about a shortage in building inspectors in the city. I noticed that we're cutting back on our contracted building inspectors. Because of the shortage, though, and so many projects happening, I am worried, Winfried, so why don't you tell me where we are on this, about whether or not we have enough inspectors to meet the needs of all the variety of projects, because if you can't get an inspection, you can't build a project.
Yes, our inspection team has been strapped, but we are in the middle of hiring quite a few inspectors. We've had some struggles with getting that list and all the interviews completed, but we just finished that. So we are bringing in additional staff for in-house to do these inspections.
Have sufficient authority to hire, but I know we're using contractors for a long time. So are we moving away from the contractors to in-house?
We're going to, when we bring in the in-house staff, the number of usage for the consultants will decrease.
Okay. Well, I just, that's good news. If you need help from HR in processing those applications and getting you the list, let me know.
I will.
Because that's a consistent theme. In Public Works, Mr. City Manager, I noticed that there's a proposal to use some of the Land Park Trust to fund an arborist, but I don't know if Public Works has reached out to the Land Park Community Association or anyone else about that, Land Park Volunteer Corps. It was news to me when I read it deep in the budget, so that's something I'd like, some follow-up with the neighborhood on. And then, there's just a couple other minor things in the clerks' budget. I did raise the issue of not funding the ticket administrator. I don't believe that I've gotten a report back from the city manager's office on that yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Do you know, Mr. City Manager, when that report back is coming? Or Mr. Dangberg, Assistant City Manager, do you know when that's?
Mayor members of the council.
Because I'd rather spend that on something else, if we can.
Pardon?
Nothing.
Oh, I hear you, I heard you. In order to determine what the value of that suite is, under our long-term, our 35-year lease, we have the rights to that suite over a very long period of time. We have to have a conversation with the Kings. A meeting has been set up with their chief financial officer, John Reinhardt, to have that conversation, and that is coming up in the next, I think it's in about a week. We've got the meeting scheduled with him, and we can look at, you know, different methodologies of doing that, whether it's... with him. And we can look at, you know, different methodologies of doing that, whether it's a lease back to the Kings or some sort of a monetization of it, and then also come forward with what the value is to the city having the use of the arena. And the council can deliberate whether that's an option. But we need to first figure out, under our agreements, how, what sort of arrangement is even possible with the Kings, and then how we'd revenue-share or monetize the suite.
So the only thing I'd ask on that is that before the end of the month, we get the report back, so we can make an informed decision related to the budget?
I will do my very best, but it's, we need to have a conversation with the Kings, and they need to provide us with information. And we'll do our very best to get that back to you by the end of the month.
All right. Howard, please. Thank you. That's it for me for now, Mr. City Manager.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Shneur, do you want to go now, or do you want to wait for the public testimony?
I want to add a question to this really quick.
Go ahead.
I'll come back later.
Yeah.
Mr. Dangberg, if you could, Mr. Dangberg, John, so when you do that, you don't have to get up. Just, you don't have to get up. Just to add this to your questions when you're talking to the Kings, like the value of the suites per game or per event, one thing I'd like us to look at is if we wanted to just pay for that position out of suite revenue, so if we gave up 10 nights or whatever to pay for that, if that's an option as well. So I want to moderate it.
And I think a report back on the community use of the suite this year, like to know whether, well, we know it, but to the public, right? What community-based organizations have had access, the kids that have had access, et cetera, who might not otherwise have access? I mean, all of that is part of the decision tree. Okay. All right. We have public testimony here in this item.
Do we have six that have signed up to speak? We'll start with Eric Frame, and then Janet
Hello again. Okay, let's see, where to start. Oh, I have a great strategic investment that will help economic development. It's called a tiny house village. First, it'll create jobs. Second, it'll get people off the street. And third, it'll give the city good PR. Because you see on Facebook the other cities that build tiny houses, they get a lot of love for it because they're actually helping human beings. But I think that'd be a great win-win-win, really. I don't see anything against it. Put a little funds into that. Mr. Hanson's willing to shelter animals. Maybe we could shelter humans, Oh, I heard there was an $18 million surplus last year. I'm wondering where that went to. Just, I don't know. I couldn't tell. But surplus might go to, like, maybe humans that need it, maybe some charity. Charity? Charity, you know, morals and all that. So that was last year's budget, I heard. 18 million, that's a lot. I feel like throw one or two over to homeless, you know. Maybe it can go into my economic development plan with the tiny village, tiny house village. Throw in $2 million from the surplus over there, build a tiny house village. Once again, you get good PR for the city, get people off the streets, and you're boosting the economy because you're creating jobs. I bet even the homeless would love to build some of it. I'd certainly volunteer. You mentioned marijuana coming up in the budget. I would like you to please refrain from letting Big Pharma get their hands on our medicine, please. They are certainly looking into, you know, GMO-ing the heck out of it. And I think you guys are probably letting them do it as you're charging, what, like $75,000 to even, you know, start up a little store? So.
Thank you.
Love revolution, everybody.
Hey, Janet.
Good evening. I wanted to bring up a couple things. One, with the community development department. As we know, we're having a hard time trying to find parcels for possibly having a tent city, requesting some money to go to the community development department to look ahead for zoning, for parcels, and if they have to rezone to get something like a tent city, or like the gentleman before me mentioned, tiny houses, just as we're moving forward. Of course, we have to be good stewards of the public's money, but there also has to be a balance. So generating income, but also helping, like Mr. Hanson had said, helping the animals and the human is part of, part of the balance. So let's see if we can do a win-win and get money coming in and get money going to people that need it. Thank you.
Fago. Following Fago is Pastor Gainsborough, Braden Murphy, and then last, Frank Topping.
So I'm glad to see that there's going to be some growth happening. I like seeing that, you know, we're going to be taking care of our animals. As an animal owner, I find it very important that shelters do get funding. I kind of wish the homeless were as well-considered as our animal shelters, because there's a definite lack of human shelters in Sacramento, which would fall under the community development aspect, you know. And in order to truly develop the community, that also involves developing the people within the community, especially the people that are struggling the most. And I'm not seeing anything in the community development outlines that addresses the extensive poverty and homelessness that plagues our city. And we're finding out that there's 13,300 and I think it was 62 homeless in this region, just in the county, that have signed up for a special thing on food stamps. You know, so as we move forward, things like a tent city, like tiny home villages, these are ways to develop the community in a positive way that not only will help with not having everybody spread out everywhere and making a mess, because they have a place to throw their trash, a place to keep their gear, but also helping develop the individuals so that they can get back into our communities and be more productive members of our communities again. You know, this is a major part of developing community. And if you're not focusing at the people that are stuck at the bottom right now, then I don't think you're going to have a successful community development plan. I'm sorry. It's not a, it's like building a pyramid. If you're focused only at the pretty little top part, and the bricks at the bottom crumble, it's going to topple soon. Thank you.
Pastor Gainsborough.
Mayor and council, good to be with you. A billion-dollar budget. I heard last year was a $969 million budget. Good that it's gone up. You know who I'm here to speak for. I'm not looking for a larger place for myself to live, or more perks for myself, or another piece of the pie. I heard that the city manager's salary previously was $220,000 a year, plus perks. I think that's a little inordinate when we have a housing crisis that is nationally known. We are becoming nationally known in Washington and HUD, HUD, as the state with 10% of America's population, but 20% of the homeless. What are we doing with it? I think that the 1,600 housing vouchers that you have approved, Mayor and Council, is marvelous. It's a great step. The Continuum of Care Sacramento steps forward. I meet with them monthly. I have for two years. We'll meet again tomorrow morning. But all of the organizations that are a hospital or a continuum of care are a hospital, and I keep saying this, but I just read about the 10 plagues that Farrell had to be persuaded to not just listen, but to act upon. I keep saying that we have a hospital of care, and you are caring people, but we have a hospital with no emergency room. Why an emergency room? Because Rhonda is sleeping out there tonight with her cat. She slept out there last night. She'll sleep out there next week, because there's fighting and drugs at other homeless locations out there. We've got to have something for immediate care. You can do it, but we've got to move on it in the now, not six or 12 months from now. Let's step up with Allen Warren and get that temporary tent shelter.
Amy?
So when it gets to budget talks, I've never been prouder to leave the Democratic Party for the Green Party, because the Green Party puts people before profit. And that's an important thing to do, is put the people in need first, before making buildings look nicer, or trying to bring a soccer team here. It shows really interesting leadership to be battling so hard for a soccer team when people are sleeping outside and struggling. And especially when one of the main campaign messages from the mayor was to deal aggressively with this homeless problem. Homelessness not be hopelessness, he said. Well, they're very hopeless, a lot of them, but we continue to fight super hard to bring a soccer team here, when people are struggling. And the thing of it is, we're proud about choosing a soccer team before the people in need. At least, the mayor seems extremely proud about putting a soccer team before the people in need. As Fago said, and as many people said, a huge step towards making sure there would be enough money in the budget would be to not criminalize homelessness anymore, not force the police departments to deal with the inhumane anti-camping ordinance. And if we could help the homeless people, the businesses would grow, the economy would grow, there would be more tax base. And I'm just kind of speechless at this point, as I've made friends with many of the homeless people out here, Rhonda and others, and everybody that comes and gives me a hug. And they're asking me to say the right thing to you guys. They're acting like as if I can do something. I have no money and no power, and I'm out here making friends with the homeless and feeding them three times a week. I've done more with my no money and no power than you guys have done since I've been here for five months. Let's scrap the soccer team, hold a press conference, and announce we're going to put homeless people first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank, you're next.
I'm going to kind of try to wing this. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Had a hard time bringing this up, which is a good time to mention that the online granicus seems, if you log onto it live, it seems to be blotchy. It goes for 20 seconds and then cuts out for two or three repetitively, on and on. There, Councilmember Hanson, I'm sure you're aware, if you didn't write it, that there is a petition or a survey online, Sacramento City, about utilization of this building in Albert Wind Park, which is 3,300 square feet. You mentioned, or whoever, mentioned prominently that it was near the food co-op. You mentioned it was near the RT offices. You didn't mention that it was a half a block from the 28-hour welfare offices. You offered, or whoever, offered all kinds of possible uses, like you did at Caesar Chavez Plaza, converting the thing into whatever. I've even seen suggestions for breweries, okay? The opportunity to use that as an immediate homeless shelter, and in fact, revitalize the coordinated entry system from that building, coordinated with Sacramento County immediately, and River City Food Bank, to offer supreme services for homeless that would stop the death, or lessen the death rate immediately. Think it over. And the reason I mention it under budget is I think that the officers ought to donate 10% each of the charter officers' budgets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. You forgot. Here you come. Councilmember Hanson had one additional question on the item.
Laney, one of the things that happened since the budget was written was the legislature passed SB 1. Don't look at me like that. That's the road revenue we'll be getting from the state. I know the Public Works budget was written prior to that, but I do think that that's a significant benefit to the public. And as we go through the budget process, I don't know if we began to calculate that revenue. I know Fran and some other folks have sent around information. I think it's potentially $10 to $20 million a year.
It's a significant amount of money, and the Public Works Department has indicated that they'd like to come back at mid-year. They'll have a much better understanding of what will really come to the city, and the actual cash doesn't start to flow right away. It's not a July 1 issue.
Okay.
So that would be there. Or as soon as information is available, we can certainly do a standalone report on that information.
That sounds great. Okay.
But in terms of the general fund, in terms of looking at that cash flow and potentially backing out some general fund money, is that...
Actually, don't spend any general fund dollars on transportation projects.
Okay.
Right now, the money for biking is zero. Most road repair money is minimal Measure A. So I think that's...
Nothing from nothing. Right.
Or than we had.
Good. Okay. That concludes that item. Do we need a vote to receive and file both items?
No.
No? Okay. That is the end of the agenda for this evening. We now have public comment on matters not on the agenda before we adjourn.
Okay. We have 17 people who have signed up for matters not on the agenda. We will start with Eugene Carlisle, Anthony Lear, and then Wanda, and then Elizabeth. Is Eugene here?
No.
No Eugene. Okay. Anthony?
No.
No Anthony? Okay. Wanda?
Just a second.
I don't see Wanda either. Is Elizabeth here?
No.
No Elizabeth. Is Jessica Murphy here?
Yes.
Okay. So Jessica? Okay, here comes Wanda. Then we have Jessica, and then Braden Murphy.
I brought a friend that's on the street right now, and they're trying to help her with some services. She would like to speak with you guys, too, but once she gets, then she did put a slip in to talk. I don't know if you guys are realizing it, but there's a desperate need for housing, immediate housing. We have children, we have single women out there on the street, and there's 13,000 people on the streets of Sacramento, not the 23 or 27 that you all are saying. People need immediate help. You guys need to lift this anti-camping ordinance and allow people to get back on their feet. If you guys don't do this, all we're going to do is keep on having them come in droves. I was called last night from a friend because of this child, this three-year-old child's on the street. Nothing that she did is why she's on the street. Housing is too expensive. She works. She's one of the working poor with a three-year-old. We need immediate triage center. We need immediate temporary housing in place, not only permanent housing, I agree with the permanent housing, but we need temporary triage center. We need all that we can get going here, so we can put these people that want housing. This woman has gone through every program that is in Sacramento for housing, for homelessness, and she cannot find a home for herself and her three-year-old child. This, this is not just one. We're having, there's thousands of people like this out here. We need to change this anti-camping ordinance now.
Hey, Jessica?
So I've talked about manners and respect, and you're tired of my two minutes of public comment. comment. I said it last week, and I'm going to say it this week. When people detest the advocates for speaking up, then you're going to get yourself, people are going to gather, and people are going to be going to protest. Many of you know what it's like to protest. Protest can be very many different things, sometimes in front of your house, sometimes not, just saying. The next thing that I have to say is that someone owes the public an apology because one of your police officers set two people, Fago and Nikki, up, plus other people, and no one apologized. When a police officer asks for their thing to turn in, and you guys didn't apologize, and it was found out, that's very frustrating. And then, the last thing I want to say, it only takes one time for something to go viral, and then you get yourself an investigation for doing mean things. So, this is my way of saying, just get your stuff together. It's ridiculous.
Braden? Following Braden is Eric Frame and Mark Brandis.
So, two weeks ago, I got myself kicked out of here because I couldn't refrain myself. And so, I just wanted to spend a whole two minutes on the gaslighting that goes on regarding saying, "We don't want to criminalize homelessness." It's being intentionally criminalized. The council, half of the council says to the media, they like to use it as a maintenance tool for the police. When you say that you want to be able to use it as a maintenance tool for the police, that means you're intentionally keeping it criminalized. That's the whole purpose of it, the ordinance, so that you can move people where you see fit, so they can do it if people are acting in a way that they don't see fit. That is the reason that the camping ordinance is in place. So, when you say that we don't want to criminalize homelessness, that is, that's an insult to the intelligence of the public, it's disrespectful, and that's rude, because that's exactly the purpose of the camping ordinance. The definition of camping is to temporarily live outside. That's what the homeless people are doing. In order to let them live and survive, the camping ordinance needs to be ended. Technically, it's not criminalizing the homeless, if they're allowed to just stand and never use a pillow and never use a blanket. Then, in the following sentence, Mayor Steinberg says he doesn't want to end the camping ordinance because he's worried that people will take shelter and they won't be able to get down the tents that are already up, which is, again, explaining why it's being intentionally criminalized. It is being intentionally criminalized, so if that happens, you have a law in place to take the tents down. So, just treat people with respect, don't gaslight them. The reason Trump was nominated, the reason Trump is our president now, unfortunately, is because he spoke in a truthful way, in a direct way, that connected with a lot of people. Drop the double talk, don't insult the public's intelligence. Homelessness is being intentionally criminalized via the anti-camping ordinance. Thank you.
Eric?
Mr. Warren's not here. That's interesting. Spent like two weeks in a row now, and also the couple of weeks before. We need him to show up, since he's the only one that seems to care about the homeless. Let's see. I'm going to go into, all right, let's start off with Mr., or let's just, I can't address them, so. Mr. Mayor, well, screw it. Mr. Mayor, in 1995, you said that no camping ordinance was inhumane, and now, as mayor, you have a no camping ordinance up and running, and I'm wondering what changed in your mind between 1995 and now to make a no camping ordinance inhumane back then, but not now? You answered that by saying you don't believe in criminalizing the homeless. As Braden just pointed out, the no camping ordinance criminalizes the homeless. In addition, it murders the homeless. Oh, you went on to say, you're willing to amend a certain city ordinance that would allow churches to take in homelessness, homeless people. I don't know why that ordinance is up and running also. It seems a bit inhumane to not allow churches to help the homeless. But you're willing to take that ordinance off, but you're not willing to take the city council, or you're not willing to take the no camping ordinance off. And I wonder why that's the case as well. Who is pulling your strings?
Mark Brandis. Following Mark is Janet Fricki, and then James Clark.
Thank you very much. It's not a pleasant task to call another person or persons a thief, but I have to do that with my heart and my brain and my experience of living in cities for many, many years. The thieves are the mayor, the city council, some people on the city council, the Parks Department, and the Downtown Partnership. What was stolen was property in Caesar Chavez Park. They put in a restaurant about 10 years ago, and now they've expanded ridiculously hundreds of, about 5,000 more square feet with a subsidy of about $400,000. This is a commons. This is not like if you have public property, you know, some weed lots that the city owns, and they're going to rent, going to build something and run it out. You are a commercial landlord from this restaurant who's going to pay you $2,500, and then you're going to collect money from the alcohol, which you're apparently supporting, I suppose, because this is going to be a yuppie alcohol spot. And it's just ridiculous. Do you see other parks around the United States that have big restaurants in them? The reason is, is because they don't belong there. There are certain things that do not belong in certain places. A liquor store and a marijuana dispensary and a strip joint don't belong next to an elementary school, okay? The Queen Mary is not going to come up the Sacramento River anytime soon. And the reason Jesus threw the money traders out of the temple, he did it for a reason because they did not belong there. A big fancy restaurant does not belong. That is space for the people, for all people, not just poor people. When I first came to Sacramento, I used to sit next to a judge who worked at 7th and H. on the green, nice wooden benches. Now, you have these ugly black benches, and you've taken off most of the grass and replaced it with decomposed granite. This is just terrible. Tomorrow at 11 o'clock, I hope people come and protest the opening of this restaurant. Thank you very much.
Janet?
I'm going to go ahead and start with piggybacking on what the gentleman just said, and stepping back a little bit to what I said before, is revenues needed, there's a balance in helping others. At Caesar Chavez Park, before the restaurant went up, there was a public restroom that had been locked. Where the public restroom was, it's now part of the restaurant. There's a lot of people, including myself, who's getting very frustrated. You guys have known for a long time that there is a public safety issue, including not having enough restrooms, so you don't sell, you give a much-needed public restroom to a restaurant for profit, and the homeless people have not. I've stayed in communication with Courtney, whose father was the second person who passed around, passed away on the council grounds. She's still devastated. As we know, there's at least one person, on average, that dies a week. By definition, that is somebody's son or daughter. It might be someone's father, or grandfather, or grandmother. It's frustrating, after spending over two years coming up, and you guys say, "Well, just hold on a little bit longer," but then there's not a parcel that's that zone, there's people that are dying. And yeah, hopefully, in the future, in the not-too-distant future, but things are happening now, this week, tonight, please help as you move forward. Also, help immediately, please. Thank you.
Following Fago is Pastor Gainesborough, Frank Topping, and then one that just says Rev.
So, in my previous comment on the budget issues, I mentioned 13,000 people living homeless in Sacramento County and Sacramento City, and you might be wondering where I got this figure from. Well, seems that Sacramento News &amp; Review's been digging into some real numbers. These are the people that are on food stamps, that have signed up with a little-known program as of March, that allows them to go into participating businesses and use their food stamps for hot meals. They got, just from that alone, 13,362 people registered in this county of Sacramento on that program. It's in this week's issue of News &amp; Review, if you want to refer to that. I find this to be really atrocious, that the city's still, even when the numbers were lower, you know, it's pretty bad. We've been fighting for this repeal of the camping ordinance. We've been fighting for motion towards immediate solutions, and yet, we're having a person a week die on our streets, every week, and nothing's happening, very little. Warren puts out a beautiful proposal that doesn't go as far as some of us would prefer, but at least it shows that there is somebody on our council, between Warren and Ashby, that is actually willing to do what is necessary to improve the lives of the people struggling in their city, rather than worry more about fancy new buildings. You know, this is preposterous, you know? It's so heartbreaking to see that what's known as progressives by the Democratic Party are the ones continuing to criminalize people's existence. That's, I don't understand how you can, like, even think of a way to justify criminalizing somebody's existence, just, and then you want to talk about Trump, like you're doing the same kind of things to the homeless that Trump is doing to other people. Please repeal the camping ordinance.
Pastor Gainesborough?
He's still, God says in Psalm 46, verse 10, he says, "Be still." The Hebrew there is rapha, related to Exodus 15:26, where God said to Moses, "I am the Lord thy God that healeth thee." Our city needs a healing. God has sent Alan Warren with a plan, not for you to oppose him, but for every one of you to stand up and say, "We will find you a site. We will help you put an immediate roof over 100 or 150 of the helpless, the homeless, and the hurting and the broken." God is speaking to you. He got Pharaoh's attention. Don't make him get your attention the hard way.
Thank you.
Forgot to mention that that is also adjacent to two ultra-convenient bus routes, and for God's sakes, the 29th and R. major light rail station. Going back to my mentioning the hazard mitigation, that is a FEMA-mandated update every five years, okay? Understandably, it's joint city and county. Our prior mayor was addressed by letter from the Special Repertoire at Arena de Albuquerque, Special Repertoire on Clean Water and Sanitation for the United Nations. He went before Harvard Car Center, I believe it was, and I've seen her also speaking before the beautiful UN symbol. And she flat came out and said that Sacramento has to transport human waste. She used the actual word, four-letter word, at the Car Center on an international forum to describe how we transport our waste. That FEMA application to accept our update can be challenged. Do you realize that that could even affect our flood rates for insurance? Yeah, it can be challenged. Your severe weather, you're not meeting that challenge. Our coordinating entry system is a shambles.
Mr. Topping, thank you, sir.
Solve it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Rev, R-E-V. No last name? Someone here by Rev, R-E-V. That's it, Reverend, I'm assuming? Okay. Lorraine Brown, and then McWorthy, and then Greg Glavinovich.
When you run on certain campaign platforms and you don't honor your oath, that's perjury, that's fraud. When you raise up a banner and say that you want to help the people and you do nothing, you show no due diligence, that is called simony, trafficking in sacred things. It's violate, when you violate our civil rights, our human rights. Now, there's two people here, I want the homeless to know, you were so hostile and brutal with me, 2010, 2011, caused me such physical pain, and continue to do so. You should, really should recruise yourselves, you know who you are. I know who you are, and let me say something. When, in the past, which I shared with our attorney, when certain political figures decided they were going to be hostile and show animosity towards civil rights, human rights, and our law, the feds came in. It's called martial law, but they're not going to come for us, they're going to come for you. And my question is, how many of you are naturalized citizens that are sitting up here? Is there anybody here that's a naturalized citizen? Anyone? You're all born here, really? Anyone here that's a second, in the United States, to be a vetted citizen, you have to be a second-generation citizen, which means your parents were both citizens, born here. How many here are second-generation? You don't want to answer that. You're on borrowed time, okay? We have recourse, improbable cause, to come after you, and it won't be nice.
Hey, McWorthy?
People, let us turn to what we heard, the lies Thursday night, fast, about immigration. It's pitiful, people, to stand up and let people in here say that Hispanics can only be worked at the gardens and restaurants and hotels. It is ridiculous, because I heard that of black folks, six movements. And then, black folks was disenfranchised, what did they turn to crime? Because you put drugs on them, the same thing going to go with Hispanics. There's information that the police department going to ask for, it's the same thing these guys ask for. And where I know where that, going to get it, because we will come back to this tape here, and I'll show... to this tape here, and I'll show everybody came through here and said, "Nonprofit, we will find those people and drain their swamps." Exempt that tax status, felonies, the voter status, the illegal voting people here, we can find those people once the government get here. Information that they have about drugs, I will encourage the government to give them amnesty for turning the information over, because somebody know how drugs got to America, and a lot of the Hispanic people apt to know, because I have a connection to San Diego. We're going to have to wake up, people. We hear things here that it's not a crime to illegally come into America. It's pitiful, people. It's simple, to fill out an application, not to accept the garbage. You could spend millions of dollars, the federal government got dollars. You saw what happened in Washington DC today. I love it. Fine, because he's a liar, the top government man, get the politics out of the police department's administration. That's what you got to do. This is what killing the city right here. The police, you trying to manage the police department, you don't have the ability to manage the police department. Stay out of their business and let them deal with federal law.
Okay, Greg. Greg. Following Greg is Sean Thompson, Harry E., I believe it is, and Victor Brazelton.
Let's see here, I got two minutes, huh? Minute forty-four, minute forty-two, that lasts twenty minutes, lasts twenty seconds. In Sacramento, B., about, I don't know, a month ago, the chancellor of UC Davis was quoted to say he was shocked or surprised or perhaps sad that there were so few black engineering majors at UC Davis. I prefer the term African-American to black, but it's quicker to say black than African-American. It's even better, I like the words brown or chocolate. My wife is African-American. Her daddy was seven feet tall, her boys were good enough for pro football. She told them, "You better study, because if you get hurt, then you can't play anymore." Now they graduated as electrical engineers. They both own their own companies. One did the wiring, electrical wiring for the Queen Mary, and the other sells televisions and computers. Before I get to stories on learning regarding Willie Mays and Pete Maravich, I want to point out some relevant aspects of brain function related, relating to engineering. And let me digress a bit first to the film entitled Black Purdue Documentary Film. I saw that by accident. I was searching for something else, and all of a sudden, there was a film on Black Purdue Documentary Film. You should see that on YouTube video, it's about an hour long. It made me cry, that students had to go one hour south of campus for a haircut. Time's up, huh?
Yes, it is, sir.
If you can, before I come next time, see Black Purdue, put it in a Google search, Black Purdue Documentary Film. It's about the engineering department at Purdue.
Okay, Sean Thompson.
And what happened in the sixties.
Real fast before my time starts, I thought my district councilman was going to be here, Warren. Is he going to be in next week, maybe? We don't know. Okay, well, first, it's really good to see you all here. It's a whole new city council since the last time I was here, new mayor, new city manager, good to see you. I guess first I should apologize. I was recently, I walked out of my courtroom, and one of the channel stations were there, and they asked me what I thought about Warren's and the mayor's ideas on homelessness, and I made a quick judgment call. It was kind of negative. I said, there was probably going to be all talk and no action, as it always has been in my history with the city council, but it is a whole new city council. And you are a different group of people, you have different ideas. I've heard a lot of ideas come forth, especially from Warren, and I really respect him, I want to thank him for that. Daryl Steinberg, I hear you're on, kind of on talks with Warren about a lot of these ideas. I think that's really cool. And I don't hear much about it from, you know, your names don't really come up, but I'm not saying anything negative to you. I just, I just think that it's really cool that it's finally in the public spotlight. The idea of, of the people in power in a city considering taking care of the least among us, considering helping those of us who, for what other point, whatever point in their lives, you know, didn't quite achieve the education or the economic goals that we all hoped for when we were young, you know, maybe mental health or drugs played a part at some point in their lives, whatever led them to where they are. I've heard a lot of psychological studies that indicate that there's always a path back, and it comes through mental health services, and it comes through jobs programs, and it comes through housing, and it comes through lifting people up. And these are all things that I think you guys have the ability to, to discuss, to talk about what's potentially a good investment, or maybe not a good investment, and to make these decisions. And I would just like to continue to hear you guys talk about that, and I definitely will be paying attention. And I, I also really respect that, one thing I see here today from all of you that I haven't seen from city council in my past visits, you all look everybody in the eye, and that's really respectful. I like that.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Harry.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. I'm here to, I'm here today to discuss the city's contract with TASER International with regard to the purchase of police body cameras. I think it is a great decision to use body cameras, and TASER International's Axon II body camera seems like a fine choice for a camera. The problem that concerns me is the cost and structure of the contract. The costs of storage are much too high, given that we can purchase our own storage equipment and use that to store our data. This method would be safer, faster, and more cost-effective than using the cloud storage provided by TASER International. The decision the city should make in order to save taxpayers' money is to renegotiate the contract in a way that allows the city to pay for all the body cameras and to be able to use our own in-house data storage. This change will cut costs by at least half, perhaps more. I'm basing my estimates on the numbers I've seen in the contract and price quotes I've seen for data storage equipment. It would be a privilege for me to be able to help my city renegotiate this contract and implement a data storage solution for police body cameras. I hope you give my proposal consideration, and thank you for your time. Looks like I still have some time, so I'll throw in a few more points. I would just like to mention that, given my estimate where I said that this change will cut costs by at least half, storage capacity and technical expertise were taken into account when I made that estimate. So, the price to purchase the storage capacity needed, I overestimated. Even if my estimate for the storage capacity needed was wrong by a hundred percent, we would still be cutting the cost in half. And the equipment would be replaced every five years, and when we buy this equipment, it would come with five years of technical support included with it. Yeah, and this is not just better in terms of price, but I think in all measures of safety and privacy and speed to upload the videos, I think it's better in those regards as well. Thank you.
Could somebody look into the gentleman's concern about the contract, please? Appreciate it. Okay, good, thank you. Thank you, sir. Maria McGonigal, our IT director is right back there.
Okay, Victor. This is our last speaker.
Thank you. I came here about a year ago, and I was dressed like a turtle. And the reason that I was dressed like a turtle is because this council prioritized legitimately spending millions of dollars on making sure that turtles who were taken away from a park were rehomed and rehoused. And we actually spent more money on rehousing turtles than we did on rehousing humans. I hope as we go through and we look at the budget, that we continue to look at ways of how we currently spend money, which is mitigating, which is to the police, which is making sure that we arrest people who don't have a place to go, and spend that money actually looking at housing people. We looked at how this council stalls on finding places. What I mean by stalls in putting barriers between people being able to have a place to sleep is fences that are erected around places where they sleep, around fences erected around the park, around closing the restroom so that they don't have a place to be able to use the restroom at the park, and now investing $500,000 to open up a new restaurant and still not have access to the park. A lot of these things are basic human necessity and needs. And what the council does at every action seems to obstruct what basic human people need inside of this city to be able to survive inside of this city. While they take very little, and when I say very little, even a plan that solves one hundred people is not looking at the disaster that this city faces. And not having a triage center is also a problem, because if there was a disaster that happened inside of Sacramento, we don't have a place for people to be able to go. When we're looking at literally 300,000 people, 100,000 people who don't have an adequate place of shelter right now, this should be something that is considered emergency and not something that we have to continue to ask people, more patience on, more patience on, and more patience on. Thank you.
Hey, that is the public testimony for this evening. Are there council ideas and questions? Councilman Giddick, did you?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple items to bring up, announcements. But before I get to those announcements, I wanted to ask our city manager and to put on our Legend Law Committee is to look at the recent action that the county took on butane oil restrictions. And I know there's some legislation going statewide about butane oil. Fran, yeah, Fran, if we could look at that. I want to make sure we crack down on all of these illegal homes that are making that honey oil, we've had some fires in the area, and making sure we don't allow someone, even though we restrict and regulate it on one side of Stockton Boulevard to go across the street and buy a bunch of butane oil, butane across the street. So if we can figure that out to address some of that issue. A couple of announcements, there is, you know, Mother's Day is coming up, so, you know, go out and celebrate Mother's Day on this, this next Sunday. We celebrate Mother's Day on May tenth, that's always Mexican Mother's Day. Helps us remember which Sunday it is, I guess. The Tahoe Park Elementary Pancake Breakfast is going to be on Saturday, May twentieth, at nine AM to eleven AM. The, come out, support the PTA, help us support our school district to make sure that our kids have an opportunity for a great education and all the additional resources they need. We also have that same day before you go to the pancake breakfast, or even after. Keep Stockton Boulevard clean, that's our event. It's going to start at eight thirty AM. Hopefully you guys will join us again on May twentieth. And it's in partnership with the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. We're going out there and helping identify all the illegal dumping and all the trash sometimes that we have out there. I know there are particular problem areas, so come out and join. It's, I think, a great place for the community to take ownership over our business corridor. Again, and then on May twentieth also, that's a big, busy day, May twentieth. Mobile district offices, we're going to have Fire Station Ten Open House. Come and meet your local firefighters, learn about fire safety, and all the different things that our fire station has to, have to offer with our firefighters. That's on May twentieth from two o'clock to four o'clock, over off of, I believe that's Sixty-seventh off Fruit Ridge, Fire Station Ten, I think it's Sixty-seventh Street. And then lastly, we also do a bigger community events. We had Fight the Bite out there, educating people, educating people about the issue of mosquitoes. At our monthly Tahoe Park Food Truck Events, with our neighborhood associations, a great place for community, not just great food, but also to get information from our council offices. With that, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks Fran, and for looking at the issue on the butane issue. Supervisor Phil Cerna pushed that, and I think that's a great thing we did. I think our fire chief also was involved in testifying and support on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Giddick. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. As we mentioned earlier, the last budget discussion of the year will be this Thursday, May eleventh, from six to seven thirty, at the Clooney Center, six oh one Alhambra Boulevard.
Wednesday or Thursday?
I'm sorry, did I say Wednesday? It's Thursday, May eleventh.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. And it's at Clooney Center, six oh one Alhambra Boulevard, and there may be, I understand, a mayor sighting. Gardenlands North Gate Neighborhood Association meets this Thursday, same night, May eleventh, at six thirty PM at Stanford Settlement, 450 West El Camino. We'll be having Food Truck Mania this Friday, May twelfth, from five to nine PM at McKinley Park. Hotspots this Friday, five twelve, at Rio Tierra High School, thirty-two oh one Norsted. And this Saturday, the David Lubin School will be hosting the ESAC Garden Tour. It's a very popular event. Actually, it's all weekend. It's May thirteenth and Sunday, the fourteenth, and more information can be found at esacgardentour.com.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hanson.
It's a little bit different. Councilmember Gara and I are working on a little thing, and I didn't, wasn't sure I should talk about it, but your youth program inspired me. You know, Eric and I both came up through the fellows program, and I thought we should, since this is our council comments and opportunity to share ideas. We're working with SacState on potentially creating a local government fellows program, because we know that a lot of people are retiring, really experienced people, and so we've been talking to the Center for California Studies, because there's an executive branch, Senate one, an assembly one, and a judicial one, but local government is where it's at for, for so much of the issues that our crowds come for. And whether you're a school district, a special district, the county, the city, organizations like SECOG, the Air District, there's just a lot of opportunities to engage young people and form the next great leaders to, to run for council, to, to help bring new ideas and fresh energy. And I think I just was inspired to mention that. Hopefully you don't mind, Mr. Gara, but I'm really proud that we came up through that program, and think it could be a template for pulling through from the thousand strong to, to, to the next level beyond high school.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, today I had Claudia Espinosa, who's an executive fellow, like Councilmember Hanson, from that program. And while she enjoys her placement at CalRecycle and lives in District Six and is learning about environmental justice and how certain communities are, her interest was like, there's nothing out there for local government where a lot of these things are happening. And to see that our city is challenging that, so I think there is a lot of room for that. Sacramento could become the destination place throughout the state for people who want to become experts in local government, and I think this is a great opportunity. We should add on to our portfolio, Mr. Mayor.
Great idea. Thank you. Councilman Sheneer.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple things. We have on Saturday a youth town hall at eleven thirty to twelve thirty, and that will be for young people who are discussing kind of the future of, of how we provide services for young people here in Sacramento, and that's at George Sims Community Center, six two oh seven Logan Street here in Sacramento, District Six. Some of us will also be doing a council bike ride from District One down to District Eight, led by our city manager, much quicker than all of us. So, that starts at eight thirty up in District One, and I believe there's information on the, on the city website about the route if people want to join. There's, I think, five of us, six of us that are riding, so it should be fun. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Can't interrupt the proceedings. Vice Mayor Jennings.
So, Mayor, I do want to make sure that when we warn somebody not to speak out from the chamber office, that the next time we ask them to leave...
I just provided a first warning.
And I want that to be very clear, because so far, we've had three outbursts from the same person. And unfortunately, we didn't warn them the first time. But from this point on, I want to make it a point to everyone that's here that they respect the chamber, and they respect the speakers who are up here, and they do not yell out from the council chambers. And if they can't refrain from doing that, then they should probably not come into the chamber office. So, I just want to make sure we're consistent with that from this point forth, and I'll be more than happy to help in any way possible. I would also like our officers who are here to make sure that they also help those who don't know how to help themselves to not call out when it's not necessary. They can also be a part of the warning process. They can go to them and let them know if they... If we haven't warned them, they can go to them and let them know. So I just want to make sure that we put that out there as well. So a couple of announcements I want to make. One, I want to thank Councilmember Harris for the beautiful flyer on Pops in the Park in East Sacramento. This is very nicely done. I just want to congratulate you on that. I'm looking forward to attending some of the concerts in June. And it looks like you've got a great lineup. So I just want to congratulate you on a job well done. I want to let the Sacramento area youth know that there is a youth advisory committee meeting that'll take place tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Pennell Center. We're calling all of our young leaders that are ready to make a difference in the community to continue to come and meet every second Wednesday of the month from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And for more information, they should call 808-7192. Once again, that's area code 916, 808-7192. Thursday, in District 7, we will have a community spotlight. And we're going to spotlight the business,